We'll all stand and join me in the plans of allegiance. First I'll note that Commissioner Winter will be just a little late, but we're going to go ahead and proceed. Outmaneuvered allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll call the meeting in order three after nine. Steve?
Yes?
Wait to do the news.
Yes, thank you. As some of you are aware, Robert Wing, our previous security manager, who opened Warner Creek and as of February, then of February has retired. We have selected Brian Lee as the next security manager of Warner Creek Correctional Facility. Just wanted to take a moment to introduce him to you and if you had any questions for him.
Okay.
Brian, thank you.
Just give a little background, as you did before.
A little background, my family moved here in 1978. Wayne and Phyllis Lee are my parents. My dad was a state trooper here in Lakeview for a long time. I left in 1987 when I graduated high school, went to college over at Treasure Valley Community College in Ontario. Shortly after college, Snake River Correctional Institution was up. I said, "Well, why not? I'll give it a shot." So started at Snake River Correctional Institution, I was there until 2005. I left as a sergeant, promoted to lieutenant here, apparently here since 2005 as a lieutenant. Now promoted to security manager.
Resolution about your new job?
Yes.
We're fortunate to have.
Yeah, I'll miss a little Rob Wing though. He was one of the candidates.
Yes, he was.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
And you can stay and endure the whole session if you wish.
Okay.
Oh, we'll move right on to public health.
All right. I just have a couple amendments I received. Do you guys care which order we go through? They're pretty quick.
They go with contract amendment fourteen eight zero one seven.
Okay, that one is a good one because we get a little extra money with that one. A little bonus of $655 into the productive health program. Can't tell you why, it's just the state keeps their adjustments. So that's the main one on that. I have had Jim Bailey review it. He said it was fine, and so just have permission to go ahead and say that one and say it back.
Do you need it today, Beth? It's on the agenda, I think.
Yeah, go for tomorrow. Yeah, just let me know. No, I can do it tomorrow when you... Okay, and then the second one is, looks like contract amendments from Pacific Source. And I've, I don't know, I've gotten two. I got one in April and one in May. So I don't know if this is like a monthly thing they do. I'm not quite sure on that. But anyway, it's just a little bit of language adjustment. Pacific Source is a secondary insurance under Medicare. And so it's just a little language changes on their reimbursement rates, which don't really affect us because the only thing we go Medicare for is flu shots. So it's, and on these, the way I understand it, you have, pretty much have to agree if you want to be contracted with them. So Jim also reviewed that and said there's no problem with that contract.
Any finances with that one?
No. Great.
We'll take it on tomorrow.
Okay. Perfect. And then Denise, you let me know, right? I'll get them back. I haven't got that number back yet, so when I do, I don't know how long that takes, but when I do, I'll get it to you.
Perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
I was just looking at this first one, we talked about the court community two thousand and seven and the agreement. It just had some change of language due to CFR code of federal regulation.
Yeah, it looks like there was a little bit of change. I can't, I think you have to be an attorney really to understand some of the use media. A B went to a D or something, I don't know. But I can't, I couldn't really see where it changed the meaning of anything, so.
We got a $655 more, however.
We'll take the CFR change too, right on with it. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Have a good day.
You too.
Thanks Denise.
You good?
Before we proceed further, I'll just make a note that we have one deletion of it. That is, that's the Oregon Health Authority, IGA, is that for a later day?
Kimberly is hoping to have an answer from the state today.
So we'll cover it tomorrow?
Possibly. It may need to be tabled for a little bit. We did have two additions as well.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash eleven, what's the subject on that?
And we'll go over those changes.
And broadband grant makes something that came a little bit, that I'll explain to see if we want to go with. Sure.
Help start recording.
Moving on down then. I'll get your own shot now.
I know.
Intervention Services Memorandum of Understanding, and that be changed.
Jake, before you should be two different MOUs, one for sex offender. Welcome. Sir, this is the word of the county commissioners.
I just...
Introduce yourself.
I just, I just love mental health, if that's any indication.
Okay, I hope it was successful.
Very, very.
So for you, or two MOUs.
Where did we done one?
And rights and services between Lake County Community Justice and Lake River Hospital to provide treatment intervention for our patterns intervention program, as well as our sex offender treatment program. We got four for the last week.
I haven't got one.
I dropped out two copies with you.
Well, we have, we have one, so we have the rest of one.
Which one do you have?
The eight hundred and thirty.
It's the sex offender treatment.
Lake Health District, personal.
Okay, so in the same terms, same terms that we had previously with mental health, which is trying to exceed $10,000 in one calendar year, one fiscal year. However, this is on month for month instead of a year, longer agreement. We're going to do it month for month in the event that Lake County Mental Health or CCS is able to get a therapist in.
This is a situation where one of our therapists who used to do the foot county took a job with the hospital. And she has the expertise, so we have a right to now services to her until Lake County Mental Health can replace that person.
Correct. So as far as the patterns intervention one, I...
If you want to tell them about it and then just email it to me.
Patterns intervention?
It is the same, same thing.
With the exception of, it says patterns intervention program rather than sex offender treatment. And same, same cost.
Same scenario.
Same scenario.
And that'll be with the hospital also.
Yeah. I sent it to the hospital and they reviewed it. County council, they reviewed it on Friday. How come they didn't approve it?
And that'd be on a month for month until Lake County Mental Health, whoever can, until the final decisions. Thank you, sir. Do you have any other questions?
I do not.
Thank you, Jake. We'll deal with those tomorrow. Oh, well, Oregon watershed enhancement, enhancement board grant agreement, two sixteen, eight zero zero nine twelve five.
Yes, this is a grant agreement from the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. It's a technical assistance grant to allow the county to coordinate with the Warner Valley Rural Fire Protection Agency. The goal of this statewide program is to increase communications and support between counties and these RFPAs, increase economic vitality, and then also to help conserve sage grass habitat. This grant agreement is for 15,000. The county will receive the dollars and then contract with the Warner Valley RFA so that they can purchase PPE vehicle equipment.
PPE is personal protective equipment.
Yeah, fire pants, fire shirts, gloves, all those types of things. The grant dollars need to be expended by June thirtieth, 2017. Any other questions?
This program, Department of Forestry, right?
Sorry?
This program, there's somebody, the Oregon Department of Forestry?
It's, what? Is it the watershed enhancement board for the Department of Forestry?
No.
Okay, so I think it's...
Oh, well, it's not, but it goes to the rural fire protection. That is underneath the Department of Forestry.
If you'd like while I'm here, I can talk about resolution two thousand fifteen dash eleven, that was an addition. I kind of want to offer an alternative to this resolution for you to consider. The, what we're discussing here is the purchase of sheriff vehicle radio repeaters. There's a few ways and budgets that could purchase this equipment. One option is to use the communication fund that actually has a capital appropriations authority available. And if we wanted to preserve the funds in that communication fund, we could increase general funds transfer, true savings that general funds is going to have towards other transfers in other departments. Just want to throw that out there. Instead of running this through the technology department, we actually have a communications fund that it might make sense as well.
So Ian, I'd recommend, since we're going to deal with this tomorrow, that after the meeting, you and Denise chat and come back with a firm proposal.
Okay, that's good.
We had this discussion quite, quite a bit with the sheriff and Denise. Whenever, if you remember right, we said we would fund these within this budget year. And I, we had identified the funds in Denise's fund. For some reason, they don't want to be paid out of there and didn't want to pay them out of there.
There's not an appropriation, like you have to do the resolution to allow for the capital outlay in the technology fund. The other thing that this purchase does out of the technology department is when I allocate admin fees next year and I allocate those computer technology purchases, I would have to exclude this because it's specific to a sheriff function, so it also helps in that as well. So I can talk with Denise and the sheriff, and glad if you'd like, I can chat with you about some options to hear.
Okay.
The next item on the budget pertains to wheat spray and the roadmaster, so we wait for the roadmaster.
About nine thirty.
I wasn't here at the nine o'clock, I see. Are we delaying that?
No, no, we want to have the, however, we can do it again.
Why don't you do it one more time?
It was just an introduction of myself.
That's all it was. I'm sorry, still soon, you said, now I apologize for being late.
No, it's okay, it's all right. You got the similar thing yesterday at PAC, so.
Yeah.
We just officially introduced him to the commissioners.
I was enthralled with the proceedings, so he wanted to stay.
Ben, thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Has another brand replaces Rob Wing?
Yes, yes, we had an update in our PAC meeting yesterday and welcome aboard.
The asphalt bid also is Rick and the road advisory committee recommendation, he's based Rick. We hold off on those. And on the ATV signage, we need to get our legal counter on.
He's going to phone. He's in deposition at the moment, so.
We'll wait on that one.
So Rick would...
Yes. Credible Electronic Prescription Monitoring Agreement, Metro Health, that's Kimberly.
She gave us a pretty good explanation on her write-up on it. It's for psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner, that was contracted with Lake County Mental Health. She's asked to use the ERX module that was available through Credible.
ERX is?
It's part of their building system.
Electronic.
Correct, that is correct. Credible initially was going to charge us a fee of $10,000 one time and $1,000 per year for this user fee. She did negotiate them, it's still a substantial charge of $8,000 for the one-time fee and user fee of 600 a year. She does support this request as she states. She says it reduces medication errors and allows for greater efficiencies, so. Case of chompy.
For the audience, the Credible is the electronic, for lack of better words, electronic medical records system, software that the Lake County Mental Health use. Most providers have gone to electronic as opposed to paper stuff. And it's just a different module that would be inserted in that electronic clinical records program. Kenis Pindy. So...
She is available on phone. She's driving to John Day right now, so she might have an appointment service if we do want to.
I don't know if there's any, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I do. You ought to speak on it.
Not entirely, but I definitely will rely on our interim director, her expertise. I cannot explain it all, no, but it will lessen our liabilities and make us more efficient, so. I accept her recommendation.
For the audience, when we talk about interim director of Mental Health, our past Mental Health Director took another job up in Astoria. I don't know why he went to go to, it's a nice town, but it rains a lot. And at this time, we have, we had to have a director, so we have an interim director named Kimberly Lindsay. She's with Community Counseling Services, highly recommended, very sharp person. Until we go out and recruit our Mental Health program. Public auction surplus agreement, Denise.
This is for, we're getting ready to auction off our county vehicles for the year. And we've had discussion over the last couple of years on options. And I checked with our, the fleet group for this day, we're going to see how they do their options. And 99% of them literally use this auction site. It's called public... I'm catching me off guard.
Public surplus.
Publicsurplus.com. They have great results from it. So we want to try it this year since we have such odd units that we're going to be selling this year. We definitely want to get as much out of them as we can. Those, those units are our two sand rails from Christmas Valley, our sixty-seventh Camaro, and an expedition at this point in time, so.
So it's plus this two-door console car?
Yeah. Some craziness going on. So I would want agreement for me, gentlemen, for me to sign up with the auction site. As it is a contract, I didn't want to just do it without permission, so.
And this is a nationwide?
Correct, correct. The only thing that I kind of questioned on it and I could not lock down is what our cost is.
I'm just going to ask.
Yeah. The fees for it are calculated by agency and it's based on how much you sell and how much your item sells for. There's not like a percentage. The more you sell, the better deal you get. It could be as much as no fee for it. We might not get charged anything for it, but I have no guarantee of what that is. That does make me a little nervous, but I think they're all, I think all those sites are pretty standard. And with everybody else in the fleet group using this particular auction site.
Yeah, they wouldn't stay in business very long if they...
Correct, yeah.
But for comparative status, what has been our current procedure?
Our current procedure is to line them up with the road department and we'll just public auction. We have maybe 10 to 15 people that show up for our auction. We've done okay. It's been okay. Had a few vehicles that should have gone for quite a lot more than what they did, but less than more.
It was more just locally appetized.
It was, yeah. We did as much advertising on it as we could, but statewide, I wouldn't say out of state we did much, but.
Kind of similar to the federal government, they have a electronic nationwide system for surplus.
I will say that when I was at fleet meeting, none of them hold public auction the way that we do. They all do them on the internet. There was only one other county that used a different site and they actually kind of sounded like they were going to switch over to the same one, so.
If you go to the site, you see this Hughes County, Cook County, OSU, I've been to the site. We've talked about, like you say, a couple of years and I think that it's, it's the right way for Lake County to do. I really do, you're just right to tell and with everybody that's got it.
Well, obviously for other people to improve the system.
That's right. I'd rather be the leader than the follower.
There's some situations that will change that. But basically, they're putting it out on the internet, whatever you have, so somebody in Arkansas. Could bid a few dollars more than that, that's the way you look at it. It's just not just sure the percentage cost. But it should be two to plus in the real world. Department of Ag wolf compensation, 2016 grant.
So this is the actual agreement for the grant that we were awarded. Again, we set up a committee as designated by ORS. The committee worked really well together. Comprised of both sides of the fence, including livestock owners and those interested in saving the wolves. I forget what that word is.
Wolf preservation.
There you go, the preservation word. It was a, it's a great committee. We actually applied for $16,000, but we were only awarded $3,000. And when I talked to our contact at the state, that amount was set by number of collared wolves noted in our county, so.
Uncollared wolves are not counted, is what she said.
They do not count them. No, I sent them pictures even and they said, "Sorry."
Basically, this is the Oregon Department of Ag program.
Correct.
And when we get wolves in, of course, you get some harassment of livestock and cowards and conflicts there. So they have this program that offer the county, if we sign up, I have a committee to make recommendations. And they put some money to go for deterrent and other means.
Yes, and this grant, these funds are going to be used for preventative, mainly the burying bone piles.
And Commissioner Winter is to lead on this. I'd like for you to go ahead and elaborate.
Elaborate, before you can even receive these funds, you have to have the documentation of the wolves within your county. Working with FOG, OR twenty-five, I believe, or twenty, those numbers may be wrong. Are in the, so, one of them is the Silver Lake area, the other one's up towards the Seacam Marsh area, I believe. There is documentation of non-collared wolves, but as Denise said, they don't take those into consideration right now. Across the state of Oregon, a little bit of money is that there are, there's becoming a lot more wolves. So they're distributing the monies. The monies aren't being distributed as far because of, there's just not enough dollars there. The committee, as we've worked together, we did apply for the $16,000. We were awarded three. It gets us started, this is our first year, and it is on the deterrent. There's quite a few ranchers that have what we call bone piles out there. Once a wolf comes to those bone piles, even if you bury it after they've come, it's documented that they continue to come back. And if those bone piles have been secured and buried, those wolves will start venturing out and going for livestock. So we're going to try to educate. We didn't get any education dollars in this, but we're going to urgently try to educate the ranchers, get these bone piles covered up, and try to deter the wolves from coming into their area. So very good working group. We'll probably just meet quarterly or as needed now if there's a problem with wolf in the area. But ranchers are on there, a couple of people that are more on the preservation side of wolves, and we followed all the ORS, put this together.
Very good. Thanks. My favorite roadmaster. Come on up and tell us about the wheat program, the wheat spray, if you would. And then the asphalt bid and then the road advisory.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rick.
You guys got to talk, we have the bids. Okay, wheat bid, we had two quotes. Mark Hanson and Wilbur Ellis. And Mark Hanson's, the chief is $28,726.5. And we recommend to go with the wolf bid.
And for the public, this wheat program is for spraying weeds.
Hard rightways.
In the county road rightways.
All the rightways, yes. All set to no spray zones. Okay. Did you want the, what I want to do?
Asphalt. Yeah, we're going to take them up tomorrow, Rick.
Oh, I see. Okay, on the asphalt quote, you can see it's kind of dicey. We got three oil companies that responded to our quotes, Idaho Asphalt, Albina, Blue Line. And on the CMS two S, this is the oil that we do the overlays with, to mix with gravel to do our pavement itself. Albina doesn't make that product, so they have a known bid. And Blue Line has an earth bind that's kind of an unknown product. And the price on it is not as, I mean, you're probably thinking, wow, it's twice as much. And it's supposed to go through there per gallon as the one that's the regular CMS two S. But they just haven't been out there to improve them long enough to see that happen. Down the road, if they wanted to come down and do a sample or something like that, that might be fine. And then if you drop down on the tip seal rock, the CRS two P, Idaho Asphalt is $384 a ton, Albina's $343, Blue Line is $520. Blue Line is out of Portland, so the freight is a little bit tougher to reach. That's why they're a little bit higher. So where it gets kind of sticky, Idaho bids all in on both products. And either you can take CMS two S or CRS two P. So they're about $40 more a ton, so that's giving out about $37,000 more. So I negotiated with, I told Idaho, I said, "Too much of a spread." I said, "Our money's too tight." So I negotiated to give 250 ton to Albina, which is not a proven product, which is the same product that's north of town that you drive that fail. And got that down to like a $12,000 or $14,000 difference.
Now, to each part, we see the 250 ton and the 600 ton on the right side.
Yeah, I split them up a little bit. Idaho was okay, they said, "Okay," you know. And another thing, it'll just kind of back them off being a little bullish, knowing that they only have CMS two S. It seems like nobody else wants to make it. My fear in the future that they're going to take CMS two S away from CPA is just, it's too... My fear in the future that they're going to take CMS two S away from CPA is it's too solid, you know, the atmosphere.
So Rick, as we look at this next year, understand why Albina didn't bid on CMS two S. Should we put out both quotes, but we put it out that we're going to accept the overall lowest bid for the two quotes? That way if folks aren't going to be responsive, it's not an issue?
Yeah, but put a lot of thought in it between now and then, it's Arnie County, Lake County. I'm sure those twenty-three counties, you've seen, it's going to say more. And Idaho was, you know, they're like, we'll still make it. It has to have an NAPA cutter in it, you know, to make it durable, it's a tough product. I don't know what you're going to do when you split them, you say whoever goes bid or Idaho, I think it's going. You know, it's like workforce and that game, and that's my fear. So we're going to have to put some thought into that.
So Rick, on the CRS two P, you mentioned Albina, that's the same oil that the state highway used out there? The results that's out there, that's not acceptable?
But I went to county and looked at what Ralph Brown did in Pollock County and it was beautiful, so it could been a lock.
Okay.
I don't know, they're going to do the test and get back to us. So when I went and looked at the other places, it did work, so it starts with clean rock, I don't know.
Well, and temperatures, too?
Yeah, and everything else, so... But my question to them, I mean, I, if I could re-mail to you, it was Danny Anderson, who's the guy that's on the spot for Albina, who was here when this was done. And I was just straight to the point, I said, "I'd like to know what happened to that chip seal, it was the worst failure I've ever witnessed in my life." And I think it is, I think all of us, and I think that's about as bad as you can get.
It's artistic, but that's not...
Yeah, so we got to be, yeah. And you know, after what I learned last night, I wouldn't put it in the record that how many tons each get, it's uncontingent on my rock crushing, if I even have rock. So that's another story, you know, today you'll find out later. Tim Bender's put out two contracts on three days and Lincoln Hill didn't get it yet. And I had one, a bird in the hand, two in the bunch, and the bird in the hand flew off last night, so... Talking to the owner of the pit and you have to notify him, the one, the only one to notify him, pulled the van. So...
So it's not until two tomorrow that you'll know?
Yeah.
Maybe it's work.
It'll go into another, I won't have, we can't fit it in this week, we'll get the next one.
Okay, so the decision on this, you're saying holding off?
Just, I would go with Idaho like we have it and Albina, but not have the tonnage because they might have to be adjusted. You know, so we'll find, I almost thought about not even doing it today, and it's, well, we're going to get a certain amount of oil anyway, you know, so we'll see.
So Commissioner Shaw, you're going to raise on, will we address this tomorrow? Yeah?
Yeah. And I'd have a better idea tomorrow, I keep forgetting today's load session, too. And then we could buy tomorrow at noon, there's a possibility I know the tonnage, I know what's going to happen to it by noon. I don't think you have to have a different tonnage, I mean, it's just a bid.
Yes.
Our contract says anything from a hundred gallons to, I mean, we try and put that spread there. But you don't do that till you've got, because they have to, they have to build their supply and they have to kind of know what you're doing all along. And it's not fun, you know, if for some reason my rock doesn't turn out, I don't get my crusher, that I'm going to have to go to the tail of Idaho, that I can't use five hundred ton of CMS two S, you know, and they're like... They haven't made it with the NAPA, but they have already had that part of the oil reserved in the tanks, so...
We'll see what tomorrow brings.
Yeah. Okay, on to another?
Yep, road advisory.
Okay. My recommendation is to keep going forward. And if I, I would be more than happy to send a letter to the road advisory for the reasons, we don't want to jeopardize our chances for...
Future.
Future funds and also renegotiating the match on it. We're still going to be out, you know, quite a good money there on the match, but a ten-two-seven on a million dollars is about a hundred and four thousand, you know. I just wish that we could do more in county instead of the cash or the rock, but... And then what happens on it, the paving, we don't get the paving, the contractor gets the paving. And that's the three quarters of the match, that's a huge volume.
Just for the audience on the camera, the subject matter here is, Commissioner Wender's been working with you and the federal government on forest access roads. Lake Dog Lake is access up into forest. Heart Mountain is access up to federal lands. And East Bay is access out of Silver Lake, go past the Demetrie and access the Florida. And we was able to get three grants each one of those. And the subject matter here is the one in Silver Lake, in that the road advisory committee looked at it and they dubbed it "Road Department Budget Shrinken," that had a very high cost in match, that they thought that it might be better to spend that money, to drop that grant and spend money on some of our other roads instead of that one. That was their recommendation. But Rick had been working with the representatives from the federal government and been trying to get that cost down a little bit, so... Kind of leaving it to Rick to make a recommendation to continue with that plan or go with the road advisory.
And the important part of it, too, is that after all the hard work that Commissioner Wendersen himself and Denise and there's a whole crew put in it and got it and lent it, I mean, you had, I mean, get one, you're lucky. But to turn it back is like, how are you going to consider this time, you know? I mean, if you try to get one, that's the worst part, that we need to, that's my main goal. I'm making it work because I don't want to get that or be put in for another one, you know. It won't be considered, like, how come they can't do that?
Well, Rick, a couple of things, if you are, if tomorrow we move forward with this and you draft a letter on the whole county's behalf to the road advisory, who we appreciate, you can sure list me, I won't speak for the other commissioners, but you list me as someone they can talk to if they have any questions beyond what they talked to you about. I think, just one of the quick, I think what needs to not be lost in all this, and I know you know it, but that road does need some significant work, it's in bad shape, so...
It, and I've talked to Tom O'Leary a couple times about it since then, and he's like, oh, you know. Yeah, and that was a part of it, like, on the way home from Paisley, I was saying, "I need to talk to Emily or somebody to make sure that this doesn't mess up." Going forward, they're calling for projects right now, so this, if you're going to cancel a project, that'd be the time to do it now before you get the application. And we need to, between now and July first, we're going to put some thought in what we want to do. First of all, we've got to make sure that we get rock crushing on Heart Mountain. If that doesn't happen, Heart Mountain's got to roll back to the next summer. And the crushing goes into a huge contract, the Dog Lake Road, to make it such a volume that you're going to get a crusher. And sort of things will be done this fall, I mean, I've already kind of worked with Jeremy, tried to figure this out. We're getting, we're just rolling back and rolling back and it's just, I don't know where it's going to stop, you know. And I can't get in Dog Lake until, I would be hoping there's no culture problems till July fourth. So if I can't go to Heart, I'd love to get up to Dog and just start digging and going to work, you know, as soon as I can. So, but they're calling for projects and there's, we're all in a learning phase on this. It's a different world, but it's the only way that we can get money at this time, by guaranteed funding and the right thing. And you're learning as you go. And I would start leaning towards, you can still just do the paving and grinding without the full depth reclamation. I think that's where we're getting in trouble, the project's too large because it's too much work. And my, where I would think that a neat project would be, would be the fossil lake to sand dunes in Lost Forest. That's going to be your highest recreation area, I think. You're going to get huge help and turn around and see if you can't pave the thirty, four miles down to the dunes, get BLA to come on board and go another two. Because my road's all ready to pave, all I have to do is set the paper on it, there's no work to be done on that road, it's ready to go. And not only that, but you get five huge hate roads across the valley on a terrible road on fossil lake. That would be just a neat project to go after that, that sand dune and Lost Forest's got to score huge on recreation, I would think, right?
You would think it would, Rick, but this, talking about grants overall, just for the public, grants aren't free. This is the one we're talking about up here in Silver Lake area, it's an eight million dollar grant and ten percent match is eight hundred thousand dollars. So as we're working forward, whether we, if we're going to get that one done and we can go for other ones, we all talk about, we need to go out and get grants, but grants aren't free, there's always the match. And whenever you start getting into road construction or road improvements, you're talking into the millions, so your ten percent match is a lot. And with our road budget where it is today, it's a real concern. At the same time, we're trying to preserve, do preservation of these roads so that they will last a long, long time, so it's prioritizing those. It is a challenge, as Rick says, we do the application, Rick does the application, so we know it whenever we apply for it. But we don't know what the federal government is going to do on the SRS every year. And the projection is this year, that's the Superior Rules funding, is that we're not going to get any. So you apply for these and it is a time before you get to where you're going to put them on the ground. It may be three years later and our funding changes at our road department within that three years. It makes, that's the reason why this one has become a challenge, is because of the unknown of the funding coming into the road department. Rick's working really hard, I commend him on his work. He met last week with the federal highways people, negotiating down, trying to get our end kind there, and we will get there. But there's a lot of challenges that comes with these grants, whenever, they're going to be three years out before you put them on the ground. You're projecting three years later, you're going to do that ten percent match, and that's quite a challenge. And that's some of the frustration that comes from Rick, is he's working forward along with all the work. So we want to stay cognizant of that as we go forward applying for these grants.
Yeah, these better brands require many things that we traditionally don't do, like you have to go through a deeper process, National Environment Policy Act, do environmental statements and stuff like that. Within there, you have to do archaeological surveys, your TV's surveys, or have, contracted out to have done. When Rick was talking about the fossil lake road into the sand dunes, that would fit within the same program of accessing federal lands, because the sand dune is federal lands. And that road going in there is gravel and it's, we get the traffic and it gets rather rough.
But it's a great, a great thought if we can swing it and if we're able to just do the, without going out. I believe that has WSAs around it, I'm not sure, so it might bring in even more challenges even with just putting asphalt on top. So I'm sure Rick will research that, he's got a pretty good network of people at the federal highways program now, federal funds. So I don't know what kind of challenges a WSA would do.
Only if you got upset at Christmas and a road.
Well, that's, we hope. Give me that writing, sir, on the...
Yeah, you're exactly right, Brad, you explained it, but to the point, I'm going to investigate and then look at, even to the lease of trying to chip seal around on fossil lake to, on that end of it, because your match on it is, you've got to do that road anyway, so... Regardless of cost or match, that's a whole different deal than a full depth reclamation, but... Because Emily said chip seals or this one here, you can do quite a few, but we'll look at it, we're just, we have a quick. But before we send an application, we'll come forward and discuss what that match is going to be and what we think. If you're going to get the two million SRS or one-five or two-four, yeah, you know, you don't mind a four hundred thousand match. The road is, when you leave, the road is going to threaten you, you know.
Well, Rick, in talking about the match and wait, as, we would much rather not have to rely on a grant operator road department. We're chasing the dollars to just try to do preservation, trying to keep our road system going. But as we go forward, if we're going to be doing this, chasing these dollars, we're going to have to reserve that match in your budget. And we're going to have to start doing that during budget time and reserve that, because it can be three years out. And that will take, that will give the certainty for the match and that'll take some of the pressure off of just trying to make it within the budget or the income that's coming in, so I think that's a good recommendation, talk about it with the board. We make a decision and then we reserve those dollars during budget time.
And that'd be the time you go and stop this, where you get the application, you sure don't want to miss a lot of that.
And just for the audience, the acronym, WSAs, that's Wilderness Steady Areas, back in when Flintland Forest Land Management Policy Act had corrected the federal agencies, in this case, the land management, to steady areas for wilderness. And then Congress would act on them, so they have these WSAs all over the place and they're more stringent than regular wilderness. And nobody has acted on them in forty years now, so they are impediment.
Yeah, there's not a sunset on them.
No.
I mean, we have that up there on the Thousand Spring Road, so no, I hope you just don't lay it like that.
It could become another destination. Thank you. Should we get Bailey on the line, do we know?
He's going to call in, yeah.
Ten, okay. Then one of the additions is broadband grant, I entered that yesterday. There was a grant opportunity that came about to Myburg, just a couple of weeks ago. It's a small USDA grant for feasibility, they don't commonly do feasibility. And we have Eastern Lake County, Los Angeles, and that served Southern Harney County. Doesn't have adequate internet service, Southern, I hear County doesn't, Northern, Humboldt doesn't, Northeast MODOC. So I pulled the information together and just chatted with some of the reps from each county just to see if they're interested in maybe going together as a Motec County. And sent that information out last Friday. And it's for us to decide whether we really want to go and see that grant. It's a twenty-six thousand dollar with a twenty percent match, which is about five thousand two hundred dollars. If five counties went together, it would be about a thousand. The emphasis on that feasibility is that, right now, every county just kind of does their own thing or not do anything for broadband, leave it up to internet service providers to get there. But we can put in for a USDA grant, whether it's counties or whether it's internet service provider. If you don't have the data to put into the grant, it makes a very difficult. And also if you have the data and show that it's regional, multi-jurisdiction, it carries a lot of weight. But I haven't gotten any response back and it's kind of too bird of us, whether we really wanted to see that or say, yes, we do, but contingent on the other counties and so forth. see that or, or say yes, we do, but contingent on the other counties and so forth. So that's kind of the gist of that.
You've put a lot of work into broadband side of the world. And I've seen a little bit of the email back and forth. You haven't had a whole lot of response back from Mount Herne, Harney County yet as far as, you say there's five, Mount Herne, Harney.
Right, Humboldt. I'm looking geographical as opposed to jurisdictional lines. Mike Dermott sets that. Right, and some of the people of Mike Dermott lives in Oregon also. And they don't have, and then right across the hill to Surprise Valley, they don't either.
So this would do a feasibility study, which would move us up the, the food chain whenever you have other dollars became available, right? You'd have a feasibility study down and you'd be able to say, this is what we need. So.
Feasibility would use that grant twenty-six thousand plus the five to, to our engineering consultant expertise in broadband, just identify, just where the bound, geographic bound should be. In other words, identify where we got broadband and where we don't. So that gives a demarcation. Also identify what is in the process of going into the area. Like on Harney County, MLS Network, a fiber company, is gonna extend someplace south into Harney County. But we don't know, we don't wanna be in, any other county, don't wanna be in a position to help enough ISP, internet service provider to get a grant when we, when something's already in place and going. So we have to identify, what is approved always out there and what is the surrounding services that can be logically extended. And the emphasis is not to extend it up to a county line, and then sorry you guys on that one, when they could easily fulfill across the jurisdictions. So it's a fair, learned about this just a couple of weeks ago and been racking my brain to touch some base with the other counties, see if they interested. They initially said yes, consider it until I got a packet. I finally got the other last Friday, that's what went out, you guys received it.
What, what the timeframe, you say it's a pretty fast turnaround?
Uh, I think it's nine seconds.
And so would the dollars go out in this budget year? That's just application time? The dollars would probably come out after July one?
I'm thinking so. I haven't, I've been busy, I haven't flushed that part out yet.
But I would, I'm just, yeah, I understand that. That'd be my guess.
Yes. And also, it would be a case of, to put an application in, you don't need money in your pocket at that time, just, you know. So I'm waiting back. I had a response back from Mount Herne County, I talked to Dan Joyce. But it's kind of leaving that up to each county. I mean, talking to one person is like here. If somebody talked to me, that's not a decision. So it's back to them to make a decision whether they, five counties divided into five thousand two hundred, it's about a thousand bucks a piece.
So this, we need to give a nod of the A or N today so you can work forward with the timeframe of May second, if that's, we won't have a, unless we have a special meeting.
Yeah, I think the proper is, if, if it's N, then that's N. If it's yes, but we're not sure if the others, hopefully I'll, though some kind of later this week whether others come. So if you say yes, it would be contention.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, good morning, Commissioner.
Yes.
So we, on another topic right now, Jim, we'll be done with that in just a second. Then we get to the ATV.
Okay. Go ahead and hang on, you can call me.
Just give us two minutes.
Two minutes. Hang on.
Okay.
Please. Always have to say please.
I guess, I haven't heard much about it, Dan, but I'm, I would like to see if other ones come along with it, continued upon, at least the Oregon counties joining in. Because of feasibility studies are important to build, go to the next level, like trying to get funding, whether it's federal funding or state funding or whatever.
It shows that you give a thought and have a plan. But the emphasis here is that those very low remote geographic areas, private internet providers, those areas don't get a lot of return because they get a lot of cost to get out there, low population, so it's small revenue. So they had to have a grant or something to get it out there. And how citizens have lived out on the ranch, twenty miles out, our interest is to make sure we have good quality internet for all of our citizens. So like I said, it could be a, a N, which is, I go to work on something else. Or it could be a yes, or it could be a yes with contingency.
That's where I'm at. I, I mean, that's going off your lead commissioners. I think that's where you're leaning is with contingency, trying to bring some force from most people together.
Yep. The other counties don't want to go with it, then we're just focused on our own county. Now, the question here is, if all five counties said yes, then we go with it. If four out of five counties, that not just the contribution of the debt, if three, then not just, it increases the contribution match of the debt. So it might be something that don't have enough to cover that five thousand individually, you might have to be.
It's a little skill working to, to the number of people in there.
If it's, if you come up a little, if one or two counties didn't match to each county increases. So we need to be cognizant of that. But being multi-county and multi-states, it carries a lot of weight along with just having a plan.
Mr. Jim?
Yeah, it was, it was added today. I prefer to wait till tomorrow to make a, a A or a N.
Yep. Okay. Okay, we have a legal counter on the phone. Subject is ATV signage on county road discussion. A while back, a nonprofit group that's been heading, can't think of their proper name, but anyway, they've been very active in promoting ATV recreational routes on that county. Brian Wade, before the, he's the lead person. And he had an opportunity to put in a grant to put what's referred to as a waystation point. It doesn't give you directions or anything. He has a computer program that people, you know, raise on their iPad or whatever. And it'll let them know exactly where they're located, not to feel, first mentioned this to legal counter a while back, Jim. And I used the reference, there was a case many years ago where a family got stranded in the snow over on the coast mountains. And because they was using the GIS to get them from point A to point B, and they got into a snowbank, that's where it was not kept. And he walked to get help and he eventually died from hypothermia. I used that scenario and legal counters said that's quite hazardous. But after, kept looking into it, it's not giving direction, it's just giving a point. And they, I got busy over the holidays and they went ahead and applied for it. So, but it has to be underneath the county. So it's a little dusty right now as far as whether we want to turn that grant back or whether we want to go ahead and have this group, then we put a sign out. So we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago from the group, and Rick wasn't able to be here. So I'll, I'm gonna take some discussions, probably some comments.
Well, I, I wanna just focus on the signage itself, the grants and other issue. But Mr. Bailey's advised us, I think, through this whole process of developing the ordinance for ATVs on county roads. And Mr. Bailey, I'll let you speak for yourself, but I think your advice has been for us not to get in the business of allowing signs in our county road right of ways.
Right. The only thing I would say is, Ken and I discussed this with a couple of emails back in November. So it was pretty brief. There hasn't been a consistent or sort of a constant discussion about this. And at the time, my concerns about it, that's my recommendation if we don't do this, is first, there's the possibility of getting wrong corrections. I remember that incident that Ken's talking about with the individuals. And even though this would be intended to sort of assist people, there's also the possibility that the directions are incorrect and then we transform it into the problem. So there's that potential liability, even though it might be small. Second, more likely is the potential liability if someone runs into the marker and creates an injury. There are two parts to this. One is if the marker is in the wrong place or has been damaged and there's a failure to properly maintain marker and it causes some damage. So that's with actual liability. But anything that we put out there, if someone runs into it, even if we're not involved, they're going to sue us. Okay, they always do. And even though it might help them in the meantime, that's what every attorney does, looks for somebody to sue. And they're just gonna claim that this was in the wrong spot or it was leaning the wrong way or something like that. So that's a much more likely scenario or sort of inevitable scenario. And then the last thing is not like a legal issue for liability. But we've got an interest group that wants to put these in the county right of way. And it sets a precedent for allowing one particular interest group to put something there or come to us and expect us to do it. That leaves the next group that may not be so neutral. And then we have to decide, well, do we want to participate in this or not? And having drawn the distinction there, that's more of a headache than a liability. But it's just something that occurs to me as a possibility. So ultimately, it seems to me that it wasn't, the risks involved weren't worth doing from a legal perspective in terms of risk versus the gains.
Well, Rick, have you had a chance to talk to them?
I didn't, because I wanted to talk to you guys and Jim. And at the beginning of this, in our ordinance, everything referenced back to attachment twelve, which tells you the roads. And at the time we did the ordinance, we were.
The ATV ordinance?
Yeah, that we were kind of guaranteed a map and that we're gonna have kiosses with little maps on them to hand out. The thing that I'm concerned about is, for me, is the minutes that we, from the meeting on June seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, that the part of the liability and by the way, the county, it would be the road manager would be asked, explain to them why the use was allowed. And so what, the net all use is Tunnel Hill West Side Road, which would be closed to ATV use. We put signs at the intersection at Joe Martin's Corner, and that sign gets missing. Or a lot of those motorcycles cycles are people taken or whatever it is or vandalized. And it's gonna be like a stop sign. I mean, it's, as soon as somebody drives down that corner and goes up Tunnel Hill and hits a logging truck up there and he's, their family's gonna go, well, neither can see that sign. And that's been my fear on the signs all along, telling them what they could or couldn't do. And it, it was my understanding if they had the maps and the kiosks and stuff, they were kind of on their own. And the liability wasn't gonna be as much as you represent the signs. Through this grant, I, I went through this little thing that they brought down the other day. And I looked at all the signs they wanted to put on the county roads. And it looked like through this, they're just wanting to sign the roads that are closed. But through the grant, it says, we're wanting to put signs on all the roads that are even open. And I looked at the worksheet back here and I don't even see the post and the breakaways. To be in the MUCH standards open, you gotta meet the criteria of a sign and right of way. I really agree with Jim, you don't need some people putting those signs in, but it doesn't, you know, you gotta have line locates, you need to know how many feet they need to be set by. I'd be more nervous, you know, having a group out there putting the signs in the right of way than us doing it ourselves. But once you put them in there, it's gonna be a liability of the maintenance unless Jim or somebody else tells us that, oh, you know, it'll be fine. But that, that was my concern. It's a neat program that could bring economic development. I'm kind of in a spot that I want it for myself, but I always worry back in my mind, look like there's gonna be someday with it, you know? Cause I've, we've been guaranteed it, somebody's gonna get hurt. I mean, we don't know.
So Rick, when you say economic development, we have met that through the ordinance. We're allowing ATVs out there.
Yeah, that's the ordinance.
When we do it within the confines of having maps that show roads, you know, eventually we'll get those maps that was talked about from the beginning. And the kiosks put out, we're gonna have ATVs throughout, allowed throughout the county. So that, that I think we've already worked on and decided and approved and went through the process. We never made a motion to not allow signs, but all of our discussion was about not doing that. It wasn't until we had John and Wade add it to our agenda a couple of weeks ago that I had any idea that we even had received a grant or put in for one to do this on roads. So I, I don't wanna be in the sign business personally.
The aspect of this grant, if you got a map, which we don't have yet, and you're going down a road that's open to ATV and you come to an intersection, you come to another intersection, a map cannot really show which intersection you at. It'd be a, it's a point there with a number on it that you get on your iPad and it say you are at this intersection. It doesn't really tell you which foot hill, you know, to confirm your actual location.
So with this grant, I, I really like the, separate from this grant, the map thing that we requested and all that. Within this grant, could they use some of the monies for that and the kiosks? And then I believe within the guidelines of the grant is if they already have okay from the Forest Service BLM, put some signage out there. So the recommendation to the board here is no signage on county roads. It gives us some liability. So can this grant work this, and still utilize the grant as we get some kiosks and maps possibly out of it? And the group is able to put their signs on the federal lands if they want? Is that a possibility just for discussion?
I'm thinking it is, because it was, they wanted to start on the county, but that's for our decision, or even if they do. But it is on the federal lands also. So it'd be, you know, that management, Forest Service, and we may and may not have any on the interconnecting that kind of roads.
Just to talk.
Your worksheet, Brad, is geared for, I mean, fiberglass signs, two hundred, you can't put fiberglass on me, cause we use Mr. Fivers. So that wouldn't work.
Well, Rick, I'm, I'm promoting none on county property.
Yeah. And that's what I'm saying. I think their little worksheet is geared up for government. Cause I don't see any tools that's for, it's, it's stickers and fiberglass signs and.
Well, I think, Rick, when they came before us, is that they, they were pretty enthusiastic and they were wanting to make sure for the, the grant, went through the county, that we got our fair share of it. I think today we're sitting here, sitting back saying, okay, there's some liabilities come with that. So the grant may still be a good grant. We just don't step out of the signing site on the county site. Is, is where I'm looking at, trying to find a way to make this still work for enthusiasm that Mr. has.
If they put it out on the federal lands, first, we might be able to see how well it works, why it works, why it doesn't work.
How do you like that federal signage now? Sorry, that was, that was out of line. We've made that tour.
But again, this is to, at key intersections, when you got many intersection, it tells you one intersection. And it doesn't tell you to go right. you one intersection and it doesn't tell you to go right or left, that's up to the person. But if, at what intersection, that's just over. But the other, having been addressed, liability, if we come through the county as the bank and let them take the money and put it on federal lands, Jim, is there liability for us to be the bank?
If they, we make it pass through.
Yeah, if we are a pass through and they put these location markers out on federal lands, what's our liability for being a pass through?
So we would get the grant and who would put the markers up?
This ATV group. Coordinating with the agency that, if they put them out on the management, they would work with the recreation person, Chris Bishop. If they put them up on the national forest, they'd work with the...
Yeah, hard to see how we'd be, have any exposure there as the pass through because we wouldn't be directing them. We'd just be supplying the funding. So, yeah, I don't see that being wrong.
Yeah, before you zoned the line, we just talked about it, no web grant is going to be a pass through for firefighting on range lands out here. We won't, I don't believe we'll have any exposure if they don't get the fire, how to help with them. Pass through grants, some of these grants are only allowable to go through a government entity or in this case, this group was informed long enough for it, for them to be able to have a pass through them. I believe you're right, Jim, probably checked into that more, but I don't think we would have any exposure or liability just being a pass through. Don't know for sure.
And having these waypoints, again, it's just a part that's signed with a little number on it, three digit, that tells them what intersection they're at and then they can use a map to go from there. But if we, I think there's more of a need out on the federal lands and on county lands.
Well, and one of my biggest concerns is, is the enthusiasm is great today. We get the signs up and then they don't get maintained, enthusiasm changes and then the public becomes reliant on those and say their GPS system hasn't been upgraded, they fall in the parts, they're, we end up with these signages in our county right of ways that the public are expecting to maintain to a certain level. And that, that would be one of my concerns.
If they don't, yeah, they, they're not, I talked with them, they will maintain the signs, but there's always, yes, today, I may not even use, but that's with all of our signs.
Well, we've seen it along some of the state highways with highway signs and scenic signs, they go up and then years later, they're not quite as attractive because nobody maintains.
Same with the World War I veteran signs.
Yeah, yeah.
But if they don't maintain it, then they yank. So in the rest, let's see how it works on the GLM management and federal.
Well, that's where I'm leaning today, just through the discussion and I'm sure that they'll make final decisions tomorrow, but that's where I'm leaning is, is by the liability that's explained to us on the county roads, at this point, we probably should hold off on the county side.
Yeah, and let them give us additional information, how they would negate that concern.
Do you want to add that to tomorrow then?
I assumed it was.
No, I only wanted to...
Were we going to act on something today on that? If we are, I'm fine with that.
I just had this discussion, I didn't have any action. I can add it for...
Add it tomorrow.
I just wanted to add one more thing, that if we're going to take it as a pass through and it's kind of towards parks and rec, if, we would put it in my 202 budget if it's, if I'm not going to do that on the county roads.
Yeah. Then there was another question of, you know, the budget is, where do we place that money as a pass through, either in a road or in parks and rec or whatever?
I would, I would do it through the treasurer's office because it's just a pass.
It's like the governor's.
Yeah, it'd be in the treasurer's office, but we could, in her budget, the county should...
Or it could be its own fund budget line item, it'd be similar to the wildland fire one, I guess.
It just won't be in the road department?
Yeah. Okay. We make it get through.
Might happen.
Thank you. Okay, that's, do we have anything else for Jim?
Mr. Bailey, did you want to do our executive session today with Commissioner Winters here or do you want to wait until tomorrow?
Well, we covered it. It's, it's pretty simple. The, the question that's posed in both the MERS question, do I need to explain what MERS is?
It's Middle East Respiratory Syndrome. I looked it up and that's what the internet said, so it has to be true.
Yeah, I don't know what else I can add to that. The system, MERS stands for Mortgage Electronic Registration System. And some of the big banks put this together for bugging mortgages and dealing with them that way. And as a result of doing that, a lot of people couldn't figure out who was holding their mortgage and a lot of counties across the United States couldn't figure out where to assess the filing to be used for mortgages and stuff. As a result, it cost different counties, different amounts of money, in some cases billions of dollars. So what the counties are thinking about doing right now is they're asking whether or not, well, there's a group of counties right now, and they're signing a common interest agreement which says, yeah, we're interested in any sort of litigation that goes forward against these large banks, sort of bringing everybody together because the banks are a pretty big target to try and take down individually, the counties are acting individually and pursuing litigation that way. So you don't, all of us are expressing an interest in participating as this discussion goes far, goes farther. So it doesn't hurt us to say, yes, we're interested in seeing where it goes. And by signing onto that agreement, that's all we do, we can get out just by sending them an email saying we're out. So it keeps our options open, it speaks to me to do the way it's forced to go. So there's that one. And then there's also some discussion about discussing whether or not to do something similar involving litigation against the state for the bills that were passed last year for funding mandatory sick leave and increasing minimum wage as unfunded mandates, which are in violation of the Oregon Constitution. So the idea of the litigation against the state saying you've demanded we provide these services and Oregon Constitution says that you have to give us the money to provide these services that you're requiring. That's never been done here in labor before, but that's kind of what the discussion would be about. So those are the two things for discussion and deciding whether or not we want to participate. And for both of them, there's no harm in participating in the discussion and saying we're on board. So that's that.
So given that Commissioner Winters won't be here tomorrow, I would recommend that we take some type of decision action on those today.
Are you concerned it might be a spit vote tomorrow?
No, I just have an idea. I'm in favor of both of those.
Yeah, it doesn't cost us anything.
That was my only concern and I wanted, especially on the sick leave and the other, as the request came in, I wanted to make sure as Board of Commissioners we had that discussion. The concern is, is if we sign on, the only thing was is that at this point, there's no cost to us. Did you read that, Mr. Bailey, and were you comfortable with, that we would have an out if we sang on today and if it decided that there was going to be quite an expense to fight this, that we could say yea or nay, we don't want to follow on?
Correct, we're activated to anything we would want to do.
I'm, I'm good with this myself.
Well, I'll attend a motion.
A motion?
Over to you tomorrow, since we know what your position is.
Yeah, and I'm, I, it could be...
Is it on tomorrow?
No.
No, well, it's not on tomorrow, so let's go ahead.
So you want to go more of the disconsensational motion.
Jim, is consensus out there?
I'm not hearing any negative sentiments, so I think I've got the consensus.
Consensus, everybody concur?
Yes.
Yes.
On both?
Yes, on both.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Anything else?
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I think that's all I've got.
Okay, thanks.
We'll hang you up.
All right. You're all right.
Okay, bye.
All right.
So any department updates?
No, like you go on and on and have such presentations.
No, no department updates.
You want to add?
No department.
Thank God, several presentations.
Okay, layers on some, go ahead, Brad.
Oh, well, this, this morning, just to bring everybody up to speed, myself, Jay Collins and Denise met with Milne Health staff along with Site Manager Chris Ollein and Thad Lappert was there from CCS also. Had a good meeting with the staff, let, start out with an apology that we haven't kept them in the loop as much as we could as boards and commissioners as we went into this RFP process and, and explained that it came down to basically an emergency meeting to make that decision because we had changed our minds and we hadn't gave an opportunity to stay this way we are. Let everybody know that all three commissioners' doors are open at any time, come after us if you want to keep the communications going. Explained that within the RFP process that's in draft form now, the RFP itself that's in draft form now, is that we're working at putting everything in that RFP to protect the employees that we have now, the staff that we have now, their benefits. And I have quite a discussion about that because that is quite a concern for those employees over there, rightfully so. And with that discussion, we have two that stepped up, is going to work with Denise and Jay and review that RFP. Kimberly has a lot of things in. Mary and Vicki, both of them will be reviewing that and be a team player with us as Board of Commissioners, our team. And a lot of discussion about, well, what will happen, how fast will this happen and on and on. And we told them the best case scenario would be July 1st, but it'd probably be longer than that. Jay explained that we do have an approved budget that would show that we could continue on the way we are. Thad Lappert was great because he understands the other side of it and he put a lot of the employees at ease of knowing what kind of benefits and what kind of wages that will come comparative to what there is today on the county side. I explained to him our overhead costs are 56 cents on the dollar on the private nonprofit. A lot of times their overhead isn't there. It was interesting whenever Thad said that their insurance was much better than any of his county jobs he had. That was an eye opener to...
The insurance of CC, uh, community...
Regency, I think is what he said. And he explained that you get, you don't get basically a COLA, you get merit raises and you do good work, you get paid for it. That was intriguing to the employees. In government with all the labor laws, you're limited on whether you can do anything extra above and beyond. And so it was very good. There's going to be some, some stresses over there, no doubt, and we acknowledge that to them. We also told them that we appreciate the employees, that they're stepping up during this transition time as we've had some people for time. And not everything's perfect, by no means whatsoever. We're building those relationships. We're going to get out to our community partners, we're going to get to advisory boards, there's some people that have fallen off that over the last few years, get it back on. Left there with the positive, going to continue to follow up, I encourage, which I know you guys will, stop and say hi to them. They, they appreciate that out of all of us. They, they know we have an open door and they, they should come over and see us also. So that transition is, is going. Can't thank Kimberly and Chris enough, the Site Manager and Interim Director. So we're working on that and as a team, as a team of Board of Commissioners, I'm just the one that decided to take the lead right now and work on this, but it's all three of us that's going to make this happen.
Commissioner, I appreciate you taking the lead and the work Denise is doing, Jay's doing, and you're right, Kimberly and Chris, what they're doing because this all unfolded in a very unfortunate way and you've been along with Jay and others, you know, and worked to get us heading in the right direction.
Well, and at the end of the day, and I really tried to drive this home and Thad reassured it, is at the end of the day, it's our community health, our clients' needs. And if we, if we work towards what our community needs and the clients get the best service they can, it will all come into place. And Thad, he said, you always keep that in perspective, keep that going there. And so, and we know that as Board of Commissioners, so working hard, working with that. Next thing, May the 12th, I will be in Bend with the Super Act Area Committee on Transportation for the next level. Our number one priority after our area act was Lake County Airport, this is joint Lake and Clamond. And then second was Lake Railway, Jewel Enterprises was third, and then I call it Kingsley Field, it's Crater Lake Clamond Airport was number four, and Red Rock number five. Both of those will be working to try to get statewide, under statewide significance and try to leverage some other dollars than what the regional dollars are. Going to promote those quite a bit. From there, I'm able to stay in and negotiate at that, that level. They've changed the rules when it goes to Portland where we have a project, it's a conflict, I'll be in the audience. Mr. Blay that will carry those projects forward at that time.
So Mr. Blay wasn't able to attend our act meeting here and the super act meeting that will be in Bend that you'll be attending and representing Clamond Lake County on. Is there any opportunity that all the counties involved might see the ranking of the state significant ones differently than we did here?
Oh, we'll read it out.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes. And, and, yeah, a lot of, a lot of variables that come in from here on out.
So is there any value, Commissioner, I've never been involved in those, you always have to lead you, you're our act chair for Clamond Lake County. Is there any value in any discussions, not that you're having or Commissioner Blay's having, but others having prior to then?
Absolutely.
So would there be a list of people that would be good to be a holder because you, you heard my passion in that meeting, I am still upset about it and I'll just say that out frankly.
Yes, our state senator and representative is, the first place I would tell you to pudge argument for the statewide significant as they have political power that goes right on, on out throughout the whole process. So that, that I would encourage you to reach out to them. Reach out to our region, that'd be Judge Thompson, that'd be Al Unger, Judge McCabe, they're all commissioners, that at the regional level on, on the 12th, whenever they'll be meeting. Reach out and talk to any of those, any promotion of projects are great. Just, just to mention Lake County, we've been so successful in the past, Christmas Valley Airport, we were able to receive funds there, our airport has received two, I believe, and our railroad, three. Our airport has received two, I believe, and our railroad, three. Several million dollars have come to Lake County, so we've been very fortunate. And the more that I can have you two lobby towards any of those people I mentioned, the more chances we have I push it on forward.
So how clear text are we going to be related to the decision? Because a normal person, I know I would, and I'm not normal, but a normal person would ask the question, well, why would you be advocating for a change in length if your act went them this way? And that's where the clear text message.
The best way to explain that is, is where we want this to be in the other pot of dollars under the statewide significance, and this project, if you're talking about, probably has more statewide significance than the other one. And when that's explained, this is going to be more by counties, more than one state, and statewide significance is here.
A hundred jobs versus ten.
Yes.
Forest health, which we've all advocated versus.
Yeah, you're talking both, all three of our faction right now.
Yeah.
But anyways, and let me see what other dates on them. I think I'll hold off there and think about it, and maybe have another one here in the morning. Let somebody else talk.
Yeah, actually, I don't have anything right now that I want to, this is about that I have already.
This afternoon, a lot of colleagues are having another meeting, that's you and I, Ken.
No, that's.
I'm sorry, that's tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, you may be. I lost it.
But the invitation is to all three of us, of course. I'll attend, see how it goes. And I need to do a little pepper for the Eastern Oregon County Association. Judy Stewart, I haven't talked to Judy, I don't know what she's been up with. It's basically, I'll tell you counties kind of come together to build a stronger front in working with Forest Service at regional level and things of that nature is the emphasis. And I'll be here all this week, next week. Of course, we have a political forum in Christmas Valley on next Tuesday, 26th, and one here at Lake County on Wednesday. There's a Oregon.
Canada Forum.
Canada Forum.
And I thought it was the 27th, 28th, it just stopped.
On the 28th, there's Oregon Broadband Advisory Committee. I attend those sometimes when there's some hot or very keen, I'm a passion for getting that broadband out. They have served well because Lake County is known as a promoter for rural areas broadband. I may attend that, I'm not sure if there's, is it topic, I have to go back and be physical, but it's in Salem, I don't really much ever to Salem. But it's a long haul behind the windshield, that's at that time. But on the 29th and 30th, I got something from Harney County SWCD, Shorewater Conservation District, about a two-day meeting with Karen Bud Farland. I know Karen from several years back. She's an attorney that works with western states and landlords grazing, or in Kansas, on issues affecting basically a buffer on environmental groups that affects. And there's a couple of topics, sage rouse, sage rouse, CCA days, but the one up there and most interesting is the waters of the United States, as you may, some of you know, EPA and Army Corps of Engineers approved some new regulations that affects, they brought in the interpretation of waters of the United States, and they put some in a proposal with federal agencies, some things that can be very damaging. I know that Commissioner Shand did a deep look where this has been discussed, if he has anything to add, but deeper, I mean, not deeper, NACO National Association of Counties. They basically address how it would affect counties. If we have a county road ditch that drains from a metal down a ditch back to the creek, that would fall underneath this scenario. It's a recipe perfect for environmental group to be able to challenge counties to have a road ditch. But my concern, MRSO, is it affecting our citizens. The regulations has proposed, anything that's in agriculture use now would not be effective. But if you have a pasture out there of sagebrush and want to convert it to alfalfa, that means you have to disc it under, implant it, and it has any drainage off of it, me too, the creek, that would be, that would be covered under this new regulations. And that's, that's a massive concern to me. They're stretching their rules tremendously, so I'm thankful about going there. I know Karen from some years back, if you can bring me any thoughts on that water of the United States, I'll probably be going with that. It's a two-day session, hi. That's what I've got right now.
A compliment.
If you don't mind, Commissioner Kessner, when you two went to the meeting with Bobby Carlin, he just mentioned this Eastern Oregon Counties Association, that Susan Roberts from Alamo County called me after Judy called her to talk to her about it, but Susan was just kind of wanting to understand a little bit more about what the issue or the question was. When that organization first came together, and by the way, we are members in the sense that they said they wanted our participation. I know they called me numerous times about participating, but it came around to where they needed fifteen thousand dollars, and it was based upon our federal payments, the scale. And I came to the board and recommended that we didn't do that because it was one more duplication of everything else we're involved in from ALC, NACO, WIR, and all these other affiliated groups. Good folks on that seven county or whatever number it is association. What they were talking about were real issues and real concerns, but they were, they were duplications of everything else that's going on that we're paying the fees to. So unless there was some misunderstanding in those discussions, I'd just like to make sure we're on the record that we all agreed we shouldn't pay that, but it was very clear. I did attend one meeting in person, which was, they typically held them in Baker, a lot of them were just conference calls, but they moved it to John Day, so it made it more doable. And I did attend that meeting and shared with the group that my recommendation back to our board was that we would not become dues-paying members for that. We appreciate what they were doing, they have a lobbyist, a lot of it was focused on pill payments, payment with a tax. There were forest issues, there were public land issues. A fair amount of the discussion was around taking over the lands from the federal government. You all know me, I don't want to go there, I don't want to be affiliated with that discussion, but I can't represent the opinions of the two of you. The only thing I wanted to, for sure, since Commissioner Kessner brought it up, was the recognition that as a board, we did agree, or at least it was my belief, that we wouldn't be a fifteen thousand dollar a year dues-paying member to that group.
Yeah, there's no proposal on our table to join that group. They brought it up, they asked about it.
Yeah.
But the gist is, how can we possibly utilize that group? Sure, fifteen thousand dollars.
Couple things I missed. On the fifth, the sixth of May, I will be in Burns on the cooperating agency on the withdrawal of mining mineral withdrawal at that meeting.
Fifth and sixth?
No, just the sixth.
Okay.
I don't know what Mr. Berger, Mr. Lee covered. Did you guys cover the National Correctional Employees Week and the invitation there at all?
They were slackers when they were here.
Well, I can give the update after the pack meeting, but I didn't want to double over what you guys had probably maybe said.
We didn't say anything about National Corrections Employees Week.
Okay, so Monday, May 2nd, Oregon Department Corrections Honor Guard presentation at nine AM out at the correction facility, if you guys.
What?
To be May 2nd. And then there's a whole week-long thing, that's one thing that I think would be very nice for the commissioners to be able to go in and do. Then there is also staff awards, Ceremony Wellness and Safety Day on Tuesday, May 3rd at nine o'clock. I don't know if Public or Commissioner was invited. I know as a pack member I'm invited.
Absolutely.
To go to that also.
That is a work session, I think.
That is a work session, so we probably won't be there at that one or any of it. And also, I wanted to say that I've only made one, but on Saturday, July 16th, two to four will be their 2016 GED graduation. You have to get a whole check at a time, do the background check, and do not wear blue jeans if you go.
I wore blue jeans once, and took the congressional act, get released.
They have sweatpants that we put over.
We'll get you a jumpsuit, Ken.
Yeah. It's like falling splains. Anyways, I just, it dawned on me, probably because they said, and here that I never done an update on the pack meeting, so, yeah.
I have one thing on my list, I don't have the date, but GLM has me in having a sage rouse invitation meeting in Redmond sometime. I need to go back to my email to get it. I've spent long, long, long hours on sage rouse. We'll be at that, attended, to find out what GLM management is doing at this time.
You pass those on down, Commissioner.
On the Warner Creek Correction Facility, as my wife, Mary, and I was coming back from Summer Lake Saturday night, while my function is Summer Lake, River Lake County Awards Night, it was dark, and first, the first thing we say, as we approach Lakeview after dark, is, oh, well, that facility. And she had a question to me, she said, what all do they do out there? I said, well, they do education programs, they've got different types of graduation, GED and all kinds of things like that. She said, they need to get the word out more. So I'm passionate, calling to you, how can we to publicize and make the community learn all the good things, good things that transpires? Because he has, have an exceptional program out there. And I kind of know most of them, Brad, of course, being on the advisory committee, but the general lake person, I think we, that we can get out in the general public in some fashion, all the different programs that benefits, for when they get out of the system, they have something underneath the belt.
I know Lake County Examiner does a great job. Jimmy comes out there just about any time we're doing anything.
Yeah.
And runs a very complimentary article. You know, I speak at Rureree.
Yeah.
Brian will be coming here soon to share about his thoughts of us, the security program, Ser Optimus, we've shared there, you know, we, our prison advisory committee, we try to get all the information, we have some of these partners that attend that, so if you have any other suggestions. I spoke at Lyons before. In the past, we've had a poster and some information at the, Julie Kien, why can't I remember the?
Chamber.
Chamber. Thank you. Chamber announcing National Corrections Employees Week, so I haven't talked to her about that, she'll do that again, just letting the community know that that week nationally is a recognition of the work that correctional employees do throughout the nation, even our community safe.
Over the years, you've been at the schools, now I'm lost to work promoting jobs or whatever. Job fair.
Job fair, right.
You know, I know it's out there in different scenarios. My wife is a homebody that does childcare, she inquires.
Sure.
They are looking for volunteers out at the prison on several different things, if Mary's in it.
It's just baby-sitting three grandkids.
She needs a break.
Anything else for the good of the order? But I'd like to reiterate my compliments to Warner Creek.
Thank you.
Fantastic facility and programs.
Absolutely.
If there's nothing else, then at ten, correct? At ten forty-seven, we'll return.